Good morning. It's 8:30. Hope everybody survived the storm last night. Welcome to the Franklin County Commissioners Meeting. Please join me for the pledge of allegiance and please stay standing for our prayer by Pastor Jared. Oh, sorry. Yes, let's do the roll call.
Commissioner Stottemeyer?
Present.
Commissioner Harris?
Present.
Chair Dickinson?
Present.
Commissioner Dunn?
Present.
Vice Chair Weymeyer?
The meeting started. Pastor Jared from Hope Anthem Church will leave some invocation. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is one, peaceful, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, Commissioners. First Chronicles 4:10 says, "Oh, that you would bless me and enlarge my territory. Let your hand be with me and keep me from harm so that I'll be free from pain." This is called the Prayer of Jabez, and it prays over receiving blessing, influence, presence, and protection. So I'd like to pray that over us today. Lord God, I thank you for everybody who is present today, and I pray blessing over our great county, Lord, over Franklin County, the best county in the world. And I just pray blessing over our county, Lord God. I pray that you would give us influence that would be wise and kind, that your presence would be with us, and that you would protect us, Lord. That you'd protect us from unwise, wicked decisions, and that we would choose wisdom over all other things. I pray blessing over those who make the decisions. In Jesus' name, amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor Jared.
All right, we have a couple of items of correspondence and organizational business. Ken Halliburton is going to come and give us an update on the Franklin County Substance Use Prevention Coalition. Good morning.
Good morning, Commissioners.
Good morning. I just wanted to give an update on things that are going on with the Substance Use Prevention Coalition. We are a coalition trying to reduce drug use in Franklin County through prevention, collaboration, and pursuing resources. So some of the things that we have going on right now, we're doing some drug awareness, alcohol awareness campaigns. So we have already, last month, we did our alcohol awareness campaign here in the Commission Chambers. It was a success. We had a few people show up from the community to learn about alcohol awareness. We have a few other things going on throughout the next few months. This month is mental health awareness. If you want to come join us, you are invited. Anybody is invited in the county. We are learning about mental health awareness. There's free food, things like that. It will be here in the Commission Chambers from 6:00 to 7:00 o'clock at night. We also will...
On what date?
Do what?
What date?
I'm sorry. May 24th.
Thank you.
From 6:00 to 7:00. Provide food. We also provide childcare in Suite 6 here. So anybody who wants to bring their children, who need to bring their children, please feel free. We will have childcare available. June 28th, we are doing vaping and tobacco prevention again here. The same thing, free food, childcare. And then August 23rd, we will have our opioid and fentanyl awareness. So we'll have a, we have public speakers who come and talk about, like in August, we'll have a speaker to talk about the fentanyl, how it's affected them and their family. We'll also learn, we'll have a public training on naloxone. We'll have medication lock boxes, things like that here available that you can take with you if you want to come join and check out what we're doing, so.
John.
All right.
Any questions? Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Our second item is to issue a proclamation formally designating May 7 to 13th as Correctional Officers Week. And Commissioner Weymeyer is going to read it for us.
All right. The proclamation reads, "Whereas National Correctional Officers and Employees Week was first proclaimed on May 5, 1984 by President Reagan, creating National Correctional Officers Week to recognize the men and women who work in jails, prisons, and community corrections across the country. Correctional officers are trained law enforcement professionals dedicated to maintaining safe correctional facilities and ensuring the public's safety. The Corrections Officers of Franklin County Adult Detention Center are responsible for the custody, care, and rehabilitation of hundreds of inmates every year. The Correctional Officers of the Franklin County Adult Detention Center provide inmates with direction, hope, and a new focus while assisting with the reentry and life outside of confinement. National Correctional Officers Week raises the awareness of the duties, hazards, and sacrifices made by correctional officers. Correctional officers and employees deserve recognition for their service and should be commended for the tremendous job they do, often under difficult circumstances. Therefore, be it resolved that the Franklin County Board of Commissioners formally designates May 7 to 13th this year Correctional Officers Week in Franklin County and publicly salutes the services of corrections professionals in our community and communities across the nation. Signed this day, May 23."
And to accept the proclamation, Sheriff Jeffries.
Yeah, well, thank you, Commissioners, for issuing the proclamation. This is National Corrections Officers Week, and it's often an overlooked group within the law enforcement profession, but they are, they play a very, very vital role. And one of the lines in that proclamation talked about providing hope for those upon their release and helping with that. And just this last week, our program that we have in the jail that where we partner with Hope Anthem was, has been, was recognized at a national level. And I was asked to, I was flown down to Atlanta and asked to present at a national conference to talk about our program and the success that we've had there. There was about 1,000 law enforcement professionals from all 50 states that were down there, and they got to hear about what it is that we're doing here in Franklin County and the, how that's working and the success of that. And it's all to the dedication of our staff, as well as the dedication of those that we partner with for that jail ministry program. So again, thank you for that proclamation, and I want to publicly say thank you to our staff who does a great job every day.
I'd like you to approve it. The proclamation?
Commissioner Stottemeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Weymeyer?
Yes.
Chair Dickinson?
Yes.
And I, yeah, go ahead, please.
I might want to add, sir, I'm pretty pleased with how Franklin County's correctional officers are taking care of the county. Every county in the state of Kansas that has a jail has a shortage of correctional officers, I think. And Don can attest to this to the state prisons. They're really short on correctional officers, and everybody's advertising for a higher for these people. And Miami County was really short of correctional officers, and I don't know whether they did or were about to have a state of emergency to recover the correctional officers in their jail. I think, I don't know what the status is now. So thank you, Sheriff Richards, for the ever cheer-making in your corrections officer here in Franklin County.
I would echo that. We do have a great staff. Not every story is a success story, but I think that we try as well as we can to make it happen. And I don't think, I mean, we've had things, we've had baptisms in the jail. We've had, you know, things happen in our jail that other people were like, "How do you do that?" Well, make it happen. Do we have any other?
Ryland with the Ottawa Chamber is here.
Good morning. Good morning, everybody. Yeah, Ryland Miller, President and CEO of the Ottawa Area Chamber of Commerce. I just wanted to come and thank you guys for awarding the chamber with some funds for our concert series that we got going on this summer, our Flea, Chicken, and Trunk, which is just around the corner, and then also the Ladies' Night Out event that we have coming in the fall as well. And so we're excited to be able to put those events on for the community. All those events are free, community events, and so these funds are going to be able to help bring people in the community as well, outside of bringing in the citizens, to be able to enjoy that together. So I appreciate you guys for being able to allocate those funds, and hopefully the chamber can continue to work with you in the future for future events as well, so.
Awesome.
Have any questions?
I'm not sure everybody had met Ryland, so.
Oh, yeah. Excuse me. So, yeah, if you haven't met me before, I think I'm familiar with your face. I think I know everybody here, so. Appreciate you guys. So, yeah, May 20th is Flea, Chicken, and Trunk shopping event, and then June 10th is our first concert. Both of those are going to take place at Legacy Square, so invite you all and invite the entire community to be able to come out for those, so.
Awesome. All right. Thank you.
Appreciate you guys.
I guess we're saying that those are transient guest tax dollars. Those are generated off the hotels. Every time a hotel room is rented, and they're not property tax dollars, and they have to be used for those specific uses, so.
Do we have any general public comment?
Yep.
Okay. So our consent agenda today, we have the minutes from our May 3 meeting. We have a grant of easement, lots split 2209-2001. Do we need to have Pat come up to represent this, or do we just approve this?
I don't know that you do unless you have questions.
Okay. All right. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda? Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Weymeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottemeyer?
Yes.
Chair Dickinson?
Yes. All right. So our first item of business to discuss and consider for approval, adding blended learning heart saver in the amount of $40 to the current American Heart Association Training Center fees. Good morning.
Good morning. As you're well aware, Franklin County EMS is a American Heart Association Training Center. We did find an additional class that falls within the realm of what we could teach, and it's a more of a hands-on, or, sorry, hands-off. There's, it's a blended learning class, so part of it would be done online, and then the other part is they come in and just do their skills checks, and we check them off. So we were just wanting to add that today to our fee schedule. Charge $40 for the skills test.
Any questions? Discussion? Okay.
Motion to approve.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottemeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Weymeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Chair Dickinson?
Yes, I do have one comment, though. Happy birthday?
Oh, thank you.
It is a big one. I won't say which one, but, and we, I won't, we won't sing. That will be your birthday present.
Okay, thank you very much.
All right. Our second item of business, consider the approval of rezoning application 2303-2039 to rezone approximately 10.01 acres from the A1 agricultural district to the RE residential estate district.
Good morning, Council.
Yep. Like you said, we've got 80 acres currently. It's in the A1 district. We are looking to cut off about 10 acres to create a parcel so that a family member could build a home on. This is up about three miles west of Wellsville. It's surrounded by a large parcel, and then if you go west within the same mile, we have a lot of, we have about five REs, two, four A2s, seven A1s, and then one R3A. So it's a mix of what the community is, kind of, as you progress to the northeast corner of our county, we are seeing a lot more dense population, but not overextending it. There is flood plan in the area, but none that affects this proposed area property. Water, Rule Water 1 has already approved a new meter if needed, and as far as the public works, traffic does not seem to be a concern, and an added driveway wouldn't be a problem. However, that added driveway will have to be approved by the public works at the time to meet their separation distances. And on that one, that's about all I have for you. If you have any questions?
Questions or discussion?
Motion to approve is under application 2303-2039.
Take it.
Commissioner Weymeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottemeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Chair Dickinson?
Yes. And our third item of business is to consider approval of special use permit application 2303-2042 to allow for operation of a grooming facility in an RE district.
Okay. Okay, so this is for special use, or which, I'm sorry, which one was this?
This is the grooming.
Okay, good. Okay, yeah, yeah, yeah. I misheard you. So this is small grooming business for animals of small nature, pets like dogs, cats, that type of deal, not large animals. It's also in the Wellsville area, about two miles north of town, one to two miles north of town. The reason we are actually going through this, this business traditionally could be considered a home occupancy type thing. However, because we're going to be using accessory structure, we have to utilize a special use because it doesn't meet the confines of what home occupancy truly means. So the overall business model does appear to limit clientele per day, so the applicant has made it clear that we're looking at a one-in, one-out type of situation, so we're not going to get an overabundance of traffic coming through the area. They're looking at maybe anywhere between one to four animals a day, giving her plenty of time to accept one animal and release the, an animal. So it's one in, one out, as I explained. We're located right off of K-33, so we're not expecting any traffic issues or anything like that. It's going to be normal run of business off that highway, so we don't have any other excessive road, you know, usage or anything that we have to look at from a public work standpoint. As described, the hours were 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m., but I believe that was negotiated at the planning commission to where they could have a broader amount of time to be open from morning to evening, but I think 6:00 o'clock was the deadline, so that we're not pressing on the, bringing in clientele at odd hours. So it's all during daytime hours. We did receive notification from one of the neighbors that they are in favor of the services, as Wellsville is a community that doesn't actually have a grooming source for small animals at this time, so this would be an additive business that would provide services to the surrounding community that is, in this case, needed. We are requiring the allowance of two parking spots. That way, everybody can safely egress and access the property without causing any kind of fender benders and stuff like that. So there is room for cars to come in as cars leave. Down the line, there was talk about adding potential loss stations and things that would include plumbing. If that were to ever happen, we would be going through the environmental health to ensure that we have mitigation process put in place to keep the affluent hair and other materials that may go down the drain to protect the sanitation system. And then also, the plumbing itself would have to go through the building process of getting a permit. Overall, staff has looked at the situation and recommended approval for the special use permit in question. Any questions?
I would just say that it passed the planning and zoning with an eight to zero vote.
Eight to zero vote, yes. It was...
All right. Any questions or concerns?
I just want to make the comment. This is the kind of thing I like to see when somebody wants to start a new business. They come and see our planning and zoning director first and apply for special permit first and go through this process, instead of starting your business and coming in later and hopefully trying to get a grandfathered in later on. So I'll make a motion to approve this, so, start a new business.
Take it.
Commissioner Stottemeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Weymeyer?
Yes.
Chair Dickinson?
Yes.
All right. Then our fourth item of business, consider amending the Franklin County zoning regulations to add an addendum granting a temporary moratorium on the planning, establishment, construction, application for, or permitting of any special use permits for commercial wind energy conversion systems in the unincorporated areas of Franklin County, Kansas, until December 31st of 2026. Matt Toeth.
As you pretty much covered, March 15th, the Board of County Commissioners indicated they would like to place a moratorium on commercial wind farms. April 23rd, we had a planning commission meeting based on the direction you gave us, and it was voted to establish a moratorium on wind farms. That includes the plan, planning, the construction, and applications for any type of wind, commercial wind energy until December 31st of 2026. And that vote went 7-1, and therefore it was recommended for approval to you guys.
Okay. Do we have any public comments on this? We do. Okay.
All right. I'm going to take a seat.
Just a reminder to those of you who are speaking publicly, when you come up, you need to state your name very clearly and your address for the Commissioners. The first one is Chandy Proudie.
I'm not sure how we're, okay, I just, can I just ask you for a couple of things? You can share whatever you want. I would prefer that you don't share things that you just got off the internet, because we all have internet, we all have computers. And when I look things up on the internet, I know the source of where they're coming from. So I would prefer that if you had something personal to share, and, or you just wanted to stay up and say, "I'm for," or "I'm against." Did you tell them how much time they had?
No.
Are we going to give them the five, three?
Do whatever you want to do.
Can you share what you have in three minutes so that we can get out of here? Three minutes. All right. We're going to do three minutes. If somebody's already shared something that you, we'd like not to hear the same things over and over, but it's really up to you. You have your three minutes. You do whatever you want with it.
I'm going to be super fast. Number one, thank you. Thank you for going through this process with us. Thank you for listening to us, and thank you for the means that you guys have done this with us. Number two, the petition signers 2022 appraised property tax value is $51,919,048. The appraised value in the year 2022 for the wind lease signers is $4,259,406. So it was mentioned last committee meeting that this came up, in that, how should I say this? We have operations as well, and we also have stakes in the game as well. Again, just thank you for listening to us. The other thing that's important, I think, number one, is I have been called a lot of names through this process. I feel like we, you and I, have been really professional with this, so I appreciate that. And then the kids, there are a couple here today, are the ones that this is for, not us. We're not going to be here when these come down. Lastly, I won't say that. I think that's it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sabrina Metter?
I'm Sabrina Metter, 3404 California Road, Timona. Again, I guess if we're going to go with new information, first of all, I do want to thank you also, one thing, being engulfed in public office, or not me not in public office, but watching you guys, I'm very impressed by like how the staff and everybody works together, even like in all these aspects. And so that's been neat to see and watch, everybody work together. So I've enjoyed that. I just hate that I have to watch it under these circumstances. So anyways, personal stuff, I guess for this moratorium, I'm asking for you to vote. I will not go through it to respect time, because we could go over it. I have read the comprehensive plan. I have read so many regulations, this is only a few of them, but I've marked things where maybe there might be some kind of mistakes or ideas that need, I mean, you can see my notes, like how are we going to address these certain things? One thing, especially with special use permits regarding commercial wind and energy, or renewable energies, is, I thought with special use permit, there has to be 1,000 feet is when they go out and notify the people around. But if the setback that is currently in the zoning regulations is three times or 2,000 from a person's house, shouldn't that be the distance that we notify people? Because there could be that thing. I do believe that the 1,000 feet, though, might be a Kansas statute and why that's in there, but if a wind turbine currently in the zoning regulations, which I don't think is adequate, is 2,000 feet from a participating landowner, shouldn't we notify people 2,000 feet away from the property lines? So that's something why I think we really need to go through these. Personal story, recently, I was discussing with a Next Era, what do you want to call it, land specialist management guy, the guy that goes around and gets contracts, because I do have a family member that signed contracts, so I was curious. One of the things I tried to ask is if there, the funding has ended, because, you know, we have this debt ceiling thing going on, are they going to still get paid? Couldn't really get an answer, other than this company, we always pay, but it's based on information. So anyways, you know, I just was curious about that. My other concern that I thought of and didn't think of until I was talking to the gentleman, I thought, okay, so if it happens in 40 years when the contract is up, I was like, so how do they come back and re-sign, or, you know, renew it for longer? And I was like, wait a minute. You and I, the guy I was talking to, we won't even be here. Most likely, we will be dead. So everybody in this room, except for maybe the little tiny ones, are all going to be dead, which is sad and morbid, when, I mean, we might live to be 84. I mean, you guys, 40 more years? Is that how? I don't know.
Yes, we're going to be one.
Yes. Health advances increase, I don't know. So anyways, those are my concerns. I just ask that you approve this moratorium. And this, I have to show, sorry, I know that's my time, my sun doesn't come up. This is just a fraction of all the information that I have printed off. My computer and my phone have tons of information, and I would love to share. Most of it is scientific stuff, but anyways, that's all. Sorry about that.
Okay.
Ellen Cook?
While you're coming up, I was just going to say that one of the reasons that we went for it with a moratorium is because we realized that the comprehensive plan, there are other things that we need to at least discuss. And we figure that if we give ourselves that amount of time, then we'll be able to have the time to go through the entire comprehensive plan and make those changes that we need to make. We don't want to piecemeal it, so. Anyway, I'm not going to say that again. I'm just going to assume that you're to go through.
I'm Ellen Cook. I'm from Frankfurt, Kansas, and I drove like two and a half hours to be here, so do I get one extra minute?
Just go for it.
Okay. There's a quote from Bill Nye, and it says, "To leave the world better than you found it, sometimes you have to pick up other people's trash." And that's what we've been doing for 20... And that's what we've been doing for 25 days. I live in Marshall County, Kansas, where the Irish Creek Wind Farm was built. On April 15th, the blade on one of the wind turbines disintegrated. No cause has been given, but this is what we have been picking up since. The blade still hangs from the turbine, swinging in the wind, hitting the turbine at times, sounding like a gong going off and continuously throwing out fiberglass. We're not worried about the landowner where the turbine sits. He signed the lease committing himself to a life of following the wind turbine company rules. We're concerned about the landowner across the road that loves his land enough that he did not sign. This fiberglass is raining on his farm day after day. How does he protect it? We went out with this landowner with flags to mark the pieces of turbine we could find on his property after the wind farm said they had cleaned it up. With 100 flags in, in hand, it didn't take us long to have that much fiberglass marked in his hayfield. The farthest piece we found was one quarter of a mile from the wind turbine. Sarah Cassidy, Communication Manager from the wind farm, says fiberglass is not a hazardous material. Fiberglass is on the hazardous substance list. Fiberglass is regulated by OSHA. For cattle, it is not digestible, so it can cause blockages in the digestive system and could cause death. The landowner raises registered cattle. Look at the contents of this bag. How do you feed that to your cattle? How do you pick up every piece? When the next rain comes, how far is this going to float down to the next farmer's pasture? How will this farmer be compensated? We know in our county, the wind company wants you to sign off on an incident as soon as possible. This landowner was given a contract a week ago and asked to sign page three. Funny thing is, page one and two were missing. What did it say? And if he does sign it, when will the check arrive? Maybe next month, maybe a year, whenever they decide to send it. If this happened in your county, how would you handle the situation? A better question would be, how's the wind farm gonna handle the situation? The May 11th newspaper, which came out today, says the area is fenced off. It's not. It's just one lie after another. So we know in Marshall County how they're handling it, they're not. All the promises the wind farm make are not worth selling out your county for. If they do something for your county, they want their names front page on all the newspapers to make themselves look outstanding. But what about all the businesses and taxpayers in your county that donate every day to one good cause after another, and they don't want their names published? What about all the wind employees that they've promised you, that's come to your town? 15 is the going number. Frankfort got zero. Centray and Corning and the Soldier Creek got zero. The promise of support fades away when the wind farm phone numbers are changed, when they leave town and they can't be contacted. What about the turbines placed within 500 feet of cemeteries as they were placed in Republic County? This shows complete disregard for your loved ones, but that's not the wind farm's cared about. They're worried about finishing another wind farm where the subsidies are good. And where do those subsidies come from? From your pocket and mine, completely taxpayers' money. If you have any thoughts about letting the wind farm come to your, come to your county, please, I am begging you, come to Marshall County. We have no setbacks. Come to Neemahaw County or Republic County. See what they have done to our land and see what they have done to our roads, but worst of all, you won't see what they have done to our county. Our communities have been totally torn apart. Friends against friends, neighbors against neighbors, and families against families. Don't say it won't happen here. That's what we said when our neighbor's county was falling apart, and now we know. Thank you.
Thank you.
Norman? Norman Woogie? Norman Woogie?
If you didn't sign in, we'll make sure you get a chance to speak.
I don't have my hearing aids in, so I'm sorry. Norman Woogie, 3790 Pine Road. I think it's time for Franklin County Commissioners to ban the windmills. Or do we include the city of Ottawa? There are people voting in the city of Ottawa, and it says, it's all right out in the country. So many of your future problems will die. We need to stop the building of these windmills. Kansas City has grown so much in the last 60 years. I lived there 60 years ago. Spring Hill, Mission, Gardner, Ottawa will also grow. You think that people want to build a house near one of these wind turbines? A half a mile, you can hear those things going whoosh, whoosh, whoosh. Condemnates a whole section of land. Wellsville will soon be part of Ottawa, maybe in another 60 years. I suppose it's tempting to give away the big money. Some people value their peace and quiet. A friend said, since a person on the planning voted to, for the windmills, maybe we should have them in Ottawa. No, no, that wouldn't work. They don't want them in their backyard. I was busy doing other things and an educational TV program was on, I wasn't paying much attention to it. The wind turbines were scattered across the hills, the sand hills, in another state probably. It's probably more practical to put the windmills out there in the flat hills where there's no farmland disturbed, no homes affected, no neighbors offended, and no hard feelings. I don't know why the utilities are pushing so hard to place the turbines so close to where people live. It's all about money. It should about, should be about the love of the people of Ottawa and Franklin County. Ban the turbines once and for all. Your problem solved.
Elizabeth Hamel?
Just to clarify, the person on the planning commission that voted against it did not vote aga, for wind turbines, she voted against the moratorium because of the length of the moratorium. Okay, go ahead, ma'am.
She did, I was there, I heard that.
Yes.
Good morning, my name is Beth, and I'm gonna be very brief. I've been to this meeting earlier, I was at the, the planning meeting, I attended Mike Thompson's seminar at the moratorium. I've been here for just under three years, I have a farm. I come from California, I don't want to see wind turbines anywhere. I'm begging you to do the moratorium, but really begging you to do the total ban. And that's really all I have to say. Other than, in the prayer this morning, the fellow brought up wisdom and kindness. I think the wisdom to, to not let giant corporate political money come in here, wipe this place out, and then be gone, in 40 years, I'll be 110, I promise you, I won't be here. Unless there's a miracle. And I don't want to see this ruined for everybody else. Thank you.
Thank you.
Levi Russell?
Levi Russell, 1046 South Pine Street. I sent y'all an email on March 17th from my KU email responding to Commissioner Waymire's comments about what we in, in the economics profession call externalities associated with different types of things, you know, hog, hog plants and, and things like that, in addition to things like wind. And you've seen the discussion of the externalities, the fiberglass, the environmental issues that I mentioned in that email. The academic research that I pointed to in that email indicates the increase in the cost of the system, the grid, that's entailed by these wind turbines. I just want to add to that, that, you know, as an economist, I'm, I'm very interested in resources and the cost of these things. And the, the reality is that to make turbines as effective at giving us a reliable, dispatchable, in other words, usable, grid, we simply don't have the resources to do that. We don't have the resources to make all the batteries we need for that kind of thing. We don't have enough lakes to do pumped hydro storage. And if we're gonna back it up with natural gas and nuclear, we might as well just use the natural gas and nuclear. I also have three young children here in the county and plan to stay here, and at least I do. And so I, I would ask you for a ban, but I, I appreciate that you hopefully will vote in favor of a moratorium and hopefully can suss out all of the details and in a realistic fashion, not in a fashion associated with sort of fantastical, magical thinking that is so common on the internet with these types of things that are gonna save the world, I suppose. I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Judy Hancock?
Morning. Pleasure to be here. I live in Leewood, Kansas, but I own the farm where I grew up, 3469 Tennessee Road in Peoria Township. I grew up on that farm, it's been there, we've owned it since 1915, and I was sitting next to the sheriff, and he has on his shoulder a patch that indicates he's the sheriff in Franklin County, and it was established in 1855, and that's when two sets of my great great grandparents came here as abolitionists to fight, to bring Kansas in as a free state. And they were in Peoria Township, so deep roots here. And I support this moratorium. You clearly have a legislative purpose, a legitimate legislative purpose in imposing this moratorium, because since, you know, years have passed since you adopted the comprehensive plan and the zoning regs, and a lot has changed, and a lot of information has come out about these operations, and clearly there's a lot of public controversy and questions and concerns. One of the things that's come out since you adopted your plan and regs, of course, is a lot more information about the conduct of these companies. And I won't bore you again, but last time I was here, I handed up to you a copy of the press release from the Department of Justice where NextEra pled guilty in federal court about a year ago to violating federal law on wind farms. That kind of information is something that you all in your public responsibility need to take a look at as you evaluate how you might want to update your regs. I want to mention one thing, too. I was at the planning commission meeting, but I had to leave to go for a meeting, so I, after I spoke, and so I listened to the recording, and I understand that it approved seven one, but the lone dissenter made the observation that she thought it was unlawful to have a moratorium for more than six months. I was surprised at that comment, and I was particularly surprised that she didn't bring any proof to back up that statement. Typically, a lawyer would have a copy of a law or a reg or a case. She didn't do that, and I understand that after the meeting, she was asked if she had any proof to back up her statement, and she didn't produce any. I've looked, there's no state statute, there's no state reg, and there's no Franklin County reg, and as best as I can determine, no court in the state of Kansas has ever ruled that you can't have a moratorium of more than six months. And that would probably come as news to Cherokee County and some of the other counties that have recently adopted a moratorium of more than six months. So I think that reckless observation can be ignored. You have the power to impose this moratorium through December 31st of 2026. I, I think that in the last several months, I got involved in this, and this is not what I do, I do international contracts, but I've gotten a lot of calls and I've talked to people who deeply regret that they signed, and I have heard some tales that I find appalling about the kinds of comments, promises that were made to people around the kitchen table that never found their way in the contracts. That's something else I think that needs to be evaluated, because you have the power as a commission, if you were to adopt regs to permit these things, to require that they, that they, when they approach a landowner, produce a big fat document and hand it to them, like a franchisor has to when they offer a franchise to somebody. McDonald's has to give a disclosure document to everybody they offer a franchise to, long before they offer them a contract. And that has to provide all kinds of information, including information about their litigation history, information about the operations, and so on. As a landowner, I'm gonna give a tip to my fellow landowners, not only Franklin County, but at every place in the state of Kansas. Before you sign a contract, and I hope nobody in Franklin County signs during this moratorium period, but when they approach you, talk their way into your kitchen, and sit there at the kitchen table telling you all of these tales, you know what I suggest you do? And unlike the planning commission person, I brought the proof, you can secretly record those conversations. It's the law of Kansas, Supreme Court of Kansas, in 1984 ruled in State of Kansas versus Rowdy Bush, that only one person in a conversation can record the conversations. And I urge every landowner to do that, because if we had recordings of the kinds of promises that have been made to landowners about eminent domain, nobody will be subject to that, about the kind of grass that they'll replant 96 years from now, none of those things make it in the contract. And I think it would be very helpful, and I urge every landowner, before you sign a contract, record every conversation you have with these people, so you can come to these meetings and play those recordings, and you can hear the kinds of promises that are being made, but somehow never make it into the contracts. Thank you much.
Thank you.
Therese Loughlin?
A little extra minutes, I appreciate your expertise, but anyway.
Good morning. Therese Loughlin, 4896 Nevada Road. I too thank you guys. I know it's taken a lot of your time and that you hear us and that you're interested. I, I appreciate that so much. Personally, I would love to see you put a ban, not just a moratorium. And that's what I would ask for, but if that can't happen, a temporary moratorium would be good. I do have a couple of questions on that, looking at the cover sheet that was online, and would ask that possibly you take out the word special use permit for. And because when it says, I won't read the whole thing, but on the recommendations, zoning regulations granting a temporary moratorium on the planning, establishment, construction, applications for, or permitting of any commercial wind farm, please take out special use permit. NextEra is very good at finding ways around permitting. In Douglas County, they got around doing a conditional use permit and went for a temporary business permit. So I'm just very concerned that you don't specifically tie it to a type of permit, but a, a ban, a moratorium on any kind of permitting application process. Then I had a question also on your definitions. Section two, temporary moratorium, commencing on the date of this resolution and continuing through December 31st, 2026, the repeal of this resolution if earlier. Just would like a little explanation of if earlier, is that only if maybe you would ban it? Or how could a temporary moratorium be removed early? That is my concern, and thank you.
Thank you.
That's, that's all.
Okay, so is, was there anybody that did not get a chance to sign it that would like to speak? Okay. Please state your name and address.
Ah, yes, my name is Lee Bailey, I live at 3 Stubblefield Lane in Ottawa. I've been an engineer all my life. I retired as an engineer. I've got experience in working for Kansas City Paranoid Light, I was actually in solar research many years ago for the company. That was when the utilities were trying to make themselves out to be the good guys in town, and we liked to help. So we did, I actually did research in these areas. But I'm also a bigger picture guy. I'm a nuts and bolts guy, and I'm a cost benefit analysis kind of guy. I look at the company, I look at everything that goes on in Ottawa in regard to this subject on the bigger picture. How does this affect us? These people want to build these turbines, and they want to build solar farms and so on and so forth. I get it, but then what about us? How does this affect us? I have yet to find anybody that said, gee, you know, I wouldn't mind living within a quarter mile of a wind turbine. If somebody has, knows of somebody that wants to do that, I think that's great. But everybody here has to put up with what's actually there. From the bigger picture standpoint, how does this affect Ottawa, Kansas from a growth perspective? My wife and I moved here about seven years ago, and we came here because it was a rural town. It was quiet, very friendly. We love the people here. Wonderful place to live. I wonder how many people, if wind turbines started going up in Franklin County, would say, gee, I'm no, I'm not sure I want to live in Franklin County. What's around it? Revenue streams, businesses in general are all dependent upon the people here. And we would really like to keep it a friendly, a friendly county that does progressive things, but in a smart way. As an engineer, I look at the pluses and the minuses of projects and things that are done. You know, I'm hearing a lot of things today about pieces of fiberglass from wind turbines. I'm hearing about this. I'm hearing about that. Engineers do research, and they look at what is working as well as what is failing. In the Northeast, there've been 34 whales killed. How come nobody cares about 34 whales being killed? They weren't killed before the wind farms went in, so why are they being killed now? That's enough to cause pause to say, well, if that's happening in the oceans, what's the effect on dry land? I don't see anybody being forthcoming with the negatives of what they're finding with these pieces of equipment. When you have slivers of fiberglass coming off of things, that means that things are coming apart. If you've got dust, and I've heard more recently, that wind turbines sometimes need to be braked, which resembles the braking that's used on your car with the brake shoes or some kind of a braking system, all of which create dust. Is that dust hazardous? How far does it blow? It seems like the promotion of the wind products and the solar products are all about, gee, this is right. This is the wave of the future. But nobody's paying attention to the tweaks that need to be done in the meantime.
You want to wrap it up?
Okay, sorry.
Sorry.
I would encourage all of us to do our research, to check out, to see what's working, what's not. Think about the future growth of Ottawa and what it means to people. People, we want more people to live here. We've got the oldest theater in the nation, don't we? Operational still? Gosh. They would come, people would probably flock to Ottawa to see that, but they certainly are not going to come here to see wind turbines. I don't see anything from a new job perspective. The people that work on wind turbines have got to be specialists, so there's no jobs being created. Where's the revenue stream? Who has to build the distribution network that hooks to the wind turbine substations? They take care of that. Who picks up the balance of that? Who pays for it? We do. So, what's the benefit to us? I don't see one. I would like to see the ban. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Susan?
Hi, I'm Susan Hughes of 1414. I live here in Ottawa. I'm also concerned about this special use term. And I definitely want the moratorium banned ultimately, but I am also concerned about the special use. NextEra has not proven themselves and the other companies to be of really high caliber, honest, dependable, reliable people. And I can see them finding in some way with that phrase in there of requesting some other kind of permit, which then by law would not be denied them. So, whatever we can do, we really need to keep all of these people out. They're not good for our county. They're not good for our lives. They're not good for our lifestyle. They're not good for anything but themselves. And so, just, I appreciate the effort that you're putting into this and the concern you're giving. I think you're really taking this seriously, and I appreciate that and the work that you're doing on it. Keep standing for the people. We need you. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Do we have everybody that has a chance to speak that's been able to speak? All right.
My name is Rosemary Pratt. I live at 612 East 15th Street. We've lived here since '76. I'm here to ask for the ban, too. I don't see, I don't see any benefit. I don't see any benefit for, not only do I not see a benefit for Franklin County, but I don't see a benefit in general. There are a lot better energy sources than, than wind and solar. As it turns out, the, how much energy has to go in, in order to get a unit of energy out is very low. And at least at this point in the technology, there's just, we, we need to put our energy and efforts into what does work. And I think it would really be detrimental to the environment that we want to live in. I want it to, we all want to, we all want to live in Franklin County because it's rural and it's, people are friendly and people are, and you can, the, the, what you can see is beautiful. So, I don't see any reason to, and the fact that all this concrete will go into the ground and somebody will have to dig it all out someday, it just seems like poor timing, poor, poor idea. Okay, that's all. Thank you.
All right. I think we're good. I would just say that the good that has come out of this is that you all realize that what we do in this room is important. And then we realized that we needed a better way to get information out to the people in the county. So, we do appreciate you coming and sharing your thoughts. We will move to discussion, if we have any, any questions that we have? If not, then if we want to move to a, oh, and it just went, if we want to support the item, it would, the motion would be to approve an addendum to the county zoning regulations granting a temporary moratorium on the planning, establishment, construction, applications for or permitting of any special use permits for commercial wind energy conversion systems in the unincorporated areas of Franklin County until December 31st of 2026.
So, move?
Second.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes, I'll make one comment. I appreciate everybody being here today. And I understand that the people would like a full ban on windmills or any of those other conversion sources. But at this time, I think we're doing this to upgrade our comprehensive plan for the future. And that's why I'm voting a yes to do the moratorium instead of anything else.
Commissioner Weymeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottemeyer?
Yes.
Chair Dickinson?
Yes.
Our fifth item of business is to consider approving the submission of two applications for the 2025 Kansas Department of Transportation Local Off-System Bridge Program and one application for the 2024 Kansas Local Bridge Improvement Program. David Lee, Public Works Director.
So, Commissioners?
I want to take about a five-minute break.
Can we take a break? Okay. Sorry, David. You almost were there. Almost. All right, David Lee. Let's start where we finished off.
Okay. So, every year, we go through this process. KDOT has called for projects for a couple of their bridge improvement programs. And I would like to submit three different bridges this year, two to one program and a third bridge to the Local Bridge Improvement Program. These bridges, one of them is on Texas Road just south of Sand Creek. That's kind of been on our list for a while. The next one is on Thomas Road east of K-33. That's another bridge that's, that's been on our radar. I plan to, I would like to submit those to the Local Off-System Bridge Program. And then, the Local Bridge Improvement Program is, I would like to submit the John Brown Bridge, which is just east of Idaho Road. That bridge is a, actually, a historical structure. So, if we could get some help funding that, it would be similar to what we're doing on Osborn Terrace, where we would have to sit the new bridge, the new structure, side by side. So, I would like to submit these with the hopes that, you know, hopefully, one would be selected. I think the chances of us being selected again so soon after the Osborn Bridge project is, is pretty slim. But if we don't submit, there's no chance at all. So,
That's right.
With your approval, I would move forward with those.
How many of our critical bridges we have left?
Two.
Two? Are they included in here?
One of them is.
Are these our three lowest efficiency ratings, or?
They, they are three of the lowest. We've got some, some others, at least one other that is located on a minimum maintenance road.
Okay.
That I plan to bring before you, trying to use our own dollars for that at some other point this year. But these are the ones that were recommended by our bridge consultant as most, most likely to be accepted through these programs.
All right.
I know we've been talking about the one off of Thomas, off of 33, for quite some time. And that's a part of the community that's in the bones right now, right there, close to that. And I was told that in the conversation, somebody let me know they ain't advertising it, but just a little bit to the north that they're, they're projecting a housing project right there.
And I have heard those things, too. And that definitely goes into the reasoning for including the Thomas Road Bridge as opposed to another, you know, we have several likely candidates, but wanted to be a little bit more strategic about which ones we put forward. The Thomas Road, because of the potential floor development in the Wellsville area, would make sense. You know, if, if that, if that area continues to grow, that will become a more heavily traveled road, and a satisfactory, adequate bridge is needed there.
I'd make a motion to submit these three applications to the two Kansas programs for bridge replacement.
Second.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Commissioner Weymeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Stottemeyer?
Yeah.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Chair Dickinson?
Yes. And the last item of business is to consider creating the Franklin County Litter Cleanup Program in Franklin County, Kansas.
Yes, Commissioners, as you know, we've, we've chatted about this new program for a while now. We've talked about it at a study session and had additional discussion just last week. And so, the consensus was during the, the last time we discussed it, to donate $60 per hour for nonprofit group, groups of at least four, and $120 an hour for nonprofit groups of eight or more. And the purpose of this litter cleanup program is to allow nonprofit groups to come. And, and it's very similar, well, it's the same as a highway cleanup program. We have volunteer groups come and pick litter along the highway. We would do that along some of our roadways and out at the landfill. And we wanted to take it a step further and offer to these nonprofit groups a donation to help them with their activities that they, that they either sponsor or are a part of. So, I think we've got a well-thought-out program. It's based on a similar program in, in Colorado. And, and we're anxious to get it started.
Do we have to have special insurance?
We have, my understanding is that, that all of our volunteers through the, well, the, we have a form where they waive any, any claims against us. And so, that is part of our, part of our package.
Do we have to have a resolution number? Or just, we just approve the resolution and give it a number?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay. All right. Affirmative action would be to make a motion approving a resolution to establish the Franklin County Litter Cleanup Program and adopt program guidance policies.
So, move? Second.
I got one question.
Commissioner Weymeyer?
I got one question, David. Are you thinking about cleaning up just along the landfill or clear from 68 Highway?
So, the, the roads that come to mind immediately for, for us on the county side, the landfill, the roads leading to the landfill, and then also Old 50 and Old 59 are the primary, primary roads and areas that, that I have in mind. The K-68 and 59 South and New 59 North, all of that is, would be under KDOT's purview. And, and we wouldn't have authority to allow somebody in their right of way without a lot more hoops to jump through to, to make that happen.
Okay. I just, I didn't know for sure if you referred to other, other roads besides this one.
Just county maintained routes.
Good.
Commissioner Stottemeyer?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dunn?
Yes.
Chair Dickinson?
Yes. We'll move on to staff reports. Derek?
Just a few quick things. It's my hope, I don't know this for fact, but my hope is that the city of Wellsville at their commission meeting tonight, that they are going to approve the agreements for the ambulance station and the dispatch contribution. We've got updated bids, worked through all of that. I think at a staff level, we're in agreement. So, assuming that happens, then a week from today, we will have those agreements in front of you for our signature. And then, from there, it's off to the races. The expectation will be that they contribute to dispatch moving forward. And of course, we'll write the check. That'll come out of ARPA funds. So, looking forward to having that wrapped up. Secondly, Janet and I are starting our meetings with department heads and elected officials today for the 24 budget. Have looked through some of those, and, and I'm, I'm fairly pleased with what I've seen thus far. So, we'll start hashing that out. And then, here in the next four, six weeks, probably, we'll have our meetings with all of you and go through that. So, then the last thing I have, I know you all don't hear this much, but I, I think you've done a real nice job through all the renewable energy discussions. I know it's not always easy dealing with provocative issues such as this one. And you don't have to look far to see government officials who put their foot in their mouths, embarrass themselves. You guys have done great. You, you've all done fantastic. I appreciate the fact that you're willing to let folks come in here and speak. That's not always easy, but it is the right thing to do. And, and certainly, I'm proud of how this government has handled the process for what that's worth. And that's all I've had.
Thank you. Christie, do you have anything else to say? You just sat here through the trooper, trooper you are. Sheriff, do you have anything?
We're running late, but I just wanted to.
That's all right.
Commissioner Dunn, you mentioned the staffing, I guess, crisis or whatever they call it over at Miami County. So, I wanted to give you guys an update as to where we are. Our law enforcement operation side, we are 100% staffed. On, in the jail, we have hired, just recently hired two more. As you know, we partner with USD 290 with the LPSS program, and we're able to hire out of that. We did get a couple of people hired out of that. And we've got applicants for our court security as well. So, we could, we're, we're getting close to be, to being 100% staffed. I don't want to jinx it. But we're, we're getting pretty close. And when I've talked to people around us, you know, they, it's, it's much worse. So, I think we're sitting in a, in a pretty good spot. And I wanted to say thank you to you guys, because a lot of that is based on some of the benefits we have, some of the programs we have in place that kind of help retain, retain our people. And we use those as recruiting tools to say, hey, we offer, we offer this type of, of environment here. And so, I just wanted to say thank you to you guys for your efforts on that. And it's been very helpful for us.
Also, you had an awards program a couple Saturdays ago.
Yes, ma'am.
I would, I would have loved to have an invitation. I didn't see one, but afterwards, I would have liked, anyway.
I ain't out of luck.
I thought the people that were sending those out got them to, to everyone. And we, we found out really late that that
we, we found out really late that that did not happen, so.
Well, jarred, but anyway, can you publicly share with us what you did and who was, oh, yeah?
We had, we had several awards for, there were some lifesaving awards and some meritorious service awards for things that have, that have gone on through, through the year. But this year, we started something new, which was the employee of the year. So we have a deputy of the year for our law enforcement office, corrections employee of the year, and our administrative support employee of the year. So the admin employee was Sarah Rocker. She works not just in our front office, but she's part of our crime scene unit, and she, and she spends part-time in the evidence room, and she's been taking care of that. So we've got her trained up on those things. She's been willing to jump in, so, and it was, this was, these were voted on by the employees themselves. This is not a supervisor thing. The deputy of the year was Clay Thompson. Clay started, he came to us, started in the jail and has worked his way up and is now in detectives, and he's, he, he does a great job. We have a lot of people that do a great job, but everyone voted on, voted on him, and there's a lot of ribbing going on about it being rigged and things, but he, he, he was, it was well deserved. And then our corrections officer of the year was Susie Brown.
Okay, cool.
And as I've shared before, some county things, is that Susie, she's actually Derek's mom, but she's the mom to a lot of people in, in that jail. And there are a lot of law enforcement in this county that she has been able to mentor and kind of take under her wing. And so when they leave the jail and they go out to the road, they still, they still come in to talk to Ms. Susie. That's just what they do. And so it was, there was no surprise to us that, that she was the one. So those are our first three employees of the, of the year, and that will continue that, continue that going on. But in the future, we've already made note to make sure that there is a better list, so make sure that people get notified that need to be, need to be notified. I do apologize for that happening.
Definitely, definitely. We'll be there next year.
Okay, thank you.
All right. David Lee?
Okay, just real quick, we're going to be doing some work on Rock Creek Road east of Oregon, down in the, down by the bridge. If you've driven that, you notice that our brand-new asphalt patch that we installed a couple of years ago is sliding a little bit and, and rippling, so we're going to go in and try to dig down and, and install a French drain. The, the, the worst part of it is, we're going to have to close that road for a couple days while we do the work. We don't think we can get it all done in one day, and backfilled and asphalt put on it, so it, it will be shut down for a couple of days. We will coordinate with our communications director to make sure that we get notice out and, and folks are at least somewhat aware. There's not a, a very good route to get around it, but we'll do our best to get people directed where they need to go so that they can get to town or wherever they need to be, so.
How did our roads do with the storm last night?
Well, we, we got about three inches of rain, at least here in town, and our folks, we didn't get, surprisingly, we didn't get called out last night with any trees down or anything like that, but we did have, we know that there was some, you know, localized flash flooding, which occurs anytime we get that much rain and that short a period of time. But all of our folks, we're going to be out early this morning looking for those road issues, those problems, and, and trying to get them rectified as quickly as possible. And fortunately today, we've got our full complement of blade operators in all nine districts, first time in several months that, that that's occurred. So as of today at least, we've got everybody in a blade.
Is today its first day back? I saw him at the store the other day, and you could.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, awesome.
Yes, ma'am.
All right, cool. All right. Jen, anything from the clerk's office?
Yes, I just wanted to remind everyone that we are trying to place people on the ballot for the upcoming election, and we have the list in our office, and I'm going to be getting that posted on our website of all the open positions for all the cities and school districts, extension district. So we have plenty of local positions on the ballot, and we'll be, those will be open until June 1st at noon. So if you know anybody who wants to file to run for one of those positions, they just need to check in with me. The filing fee is $20 for each of those, and some of them you can file by petition, so there would be no fee if you can file by petition, but not all of those, so.
All right, thank you. All right, commissioner comments?
I'll be going to Wellsville City meeting tonight, the DOD Chamber meeting, and Paul and I discussed up there, the report that come out here last week on unemployment is you can take the same number and make it a good issue and a bad issue at the same time. We're only 2.5 in Franklin County, which is great for its unemployment goal, but for attracting businesses to come in, it's poor, because they want to see, hate to say this, but they want to see 3%, 4%, 5% unemployment to come in, because they know they can jerk on that workforce, you know, that's still out there, so. And I know it's the same way with any county department or anything trying to take up help when it's that low of unemployment, so. But it, I guess, like I said, it's a good and it's a bad on the same predict, same information, so that's all I got.
I went to the chamber board meeting yesterday morning, that's all I got. So if anything else needs to come before the commission, then I would move, look for a move.